Okay. That is the longest minute I've ever seen. All right, the recording is in progress. Apple is going to turn over and tell us it's 6:30 any minute. So why don't we begin our regular meeting? Are you with us? Yes, you are. This is a call to order, and now we will have the roll call, Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Fredericks. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Nick Farr is absent. Councilmember Ryan? Thank you. Councilmember Wellner?
Here.
Councilmember.
Vice Mayor.
Just walking in.
Councilmember Nick Farr is present. Vice Mayor Thier is present online, and Mayor Fredericks.
And I am here. Thank you, and just to follow up. Vice Mayor Thier is teleconferencing from a remote spot, and because of that, all votes will be by roll call tonight. Move on now. Lee, will you give us some guidance for remote oral communication?
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your web and our controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Now is open time for comments on any item or issue that is not on the agenda. I think there's a time limit of three minutes. If you'd like to speak, please come forward. Introduce yourself and tell us what you're thinking about.
Good evening. My name is Monique Brown, and I represent the Northern California Harpeners Union. And I just wanted to come in. Say good evening, councilors. I am asking that you consider for any big construction project. Area standard wages, health and welfare, apprenticeship language, and local hiring. So that the state doesn't have to be burdened by paying billions of dollars on medical. Which a lot of non-union contractors sometimes. Don't offer. Let's protect the middle class as they are the driving force of our economy. And are starting to dwell away. So thank you for hearing me out tonight. And have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any further public comments?
Mayor Fredericks, may I please ask the speaker to send her information for a town clerk?
I'm sorry, who's speaking and what is?
That was Councilmember Thier, and I think she was asking for the speaker to send her contact information to the town clerk.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on now. Are there any other further? Public comments?
Hey, good evening, commissioners. I'm Jane Gould, and I last spoke to you in February of this year. I'm your representative for Tiburon for the Marin Commission on Aging. And I promised to come back to you when we had some updates. Oh, by the way, I live in Lyford Cove area, and I've been a resident here for 12 years. So in terms of updates, the Area Commission on Aging did a countywide study, which was released in late April. And it's representative for the entire county, but it doesn't really break down information about seniors, people who are over 65. For Tiburon and as well for Belvedere in great detail. So we've sort of been working with that in terms of drop-ins and in terms of meetings. So in late April, we held a senior fair here in the town. We're very, very grateful to the library and to the ranch for organizing this event. It was extremely successful. I understand it was done about 20 years ago. But we're glad it was done again. And we must have had 20 nonprofits and volunteer groups come and display. We had a very good turnout of all different ages. So that was late April. From that. When I say we, my counterpart in Belvedere, Larry Binkley, and I developed a list, an email list of people who wanted to continue to be informed about aging here. And from that list, we publicized a meeting at the library this Monday. It was Monday, the 17th. And we had a group of seniors come, and I called it a drop-in session. Tell us about your needs and what, how much time do I have? One minute, about what would help you to age here in place. It was very successful in terms of eliciting feedback from people. We learned, for example, that there's no central place to drop in. Some of the people felt that the library could do more, but we needed to have more information that they could reach. It wasn't that the resources were here, it's just not awareness of how to access them. People with dogs felt luckier because they were easier to socialize with each other. The, the crux of the matter, someone said it's a wonderful place to age in place until you can no longer do steps or drive. And then you find here in Tiburon that you, and Belvedere as well, you can no longer stay here. So with that remark, we will, those remarks, we'll get back to the Commission on Aging at large. Pass that information on and see how we can work on these problems here. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the report. Thank you for the update. Is there any further public comment? For items or issues not on the agenda? Anyone else on Zoom?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. We move now to the consent calendar. Would any member of the public like to make a comment on an item on the consent calendar? Yes?
On number eight? Do I go now? Wait for number eight?
No, no, no. It's the whole consent calendar. If you want to comment, come up and tell us.
Well, no. The matter would be pulled.
Okay.
So matter eight, after we pull it, correct?
Thank you, Chuck. All right, so we'll pull number eight, the budget. Is that what you wish to comment on? Is, would anyone else in the public like to make comments on anything on the consent calendar? Anyone on Zoom?
Seeing none.
Any member of the council like to make a comment? So I would entertain a motion for approval of the remaining items on the consent calendar. And that would be one through seven and nine.
I'll move.
And 10.
And 10.
And 10. Which is. And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nick Farr?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier?
Yes.
Mayor Fredericks?
Yes.
Thank you.
The consent calendar passes with the exception of item number eight. We'll take public comment now on. Number eight.
Good evening. Chuck Hornbrook, Town of Tiburon. I'm actually surprised that there was no other discussion on the budget at all until the consent calendar, but I'll be quick. So I'm writing, providing the following comments. You'll also receive my mail. What's missing in the budget is, first of all, there's a number of items like the Bel Air Mini Park. Within the 25, 24, 25 CIP, there's a public works project going on. It'd be nice if some dollars were added for that piece. Even though we're waiting for the final study to be done, why not put some dollars aside? Second, the Cypress Hollow Playground. It's been mentioned by the members of the Cypress Hollow neighborhood, as well as people who use that park, that there needs to be new playground. Why not set money aside for that playground? Third, the inclusion, the feasibility of the sub kayak launch is not included in anything. It's the number one recreational. Attribute that people would like in this town. There's a location for it. There's a great study going on on it. Why not at least either say like, yes, we can put it there, or like, no, we can't put it there. Let's move on to the next item. Let's move the ball forward. Third is just, or fourth is just adding any kind of like capital plan on for all the other park amendments, just in the budget for 24, 25. The study will be done in October. Why not set aside $500,000, similar to what we set aside $2 million for the Martha property? That's not even in the town limits. And finally, there was nothing in the police technology. There's been some changes that have occurred. The public has been very concerned about that. It would be great to add that. What should be removed from the town budget is the $200,000 for the car charging. For the level two, three car charging, which is a high, which is the DC fast chargers. That's not important to the town right now. It is not a priority. There's many other priorities. That is not one of them. I'm not sure where that came from, but the public clearly doesn't need it or want it. Thank you for your time. I hope there's a little bit more discussion on the budget.
Thank you. Are there any further comments? On this particular item from the public? I'm seeing none. Bring it back to council.
So I just want to say. We have reviewed the budget. I think it's a solid budget. It's balanced, and it includes all the items that we've reviewed together. I think there is a common theme in some of the comments that we've been receiving from some late letters and from Mr. Hornbrook. Which is to fund things before they're ready. I think we should wait for the completion of studies on projects before we allocate funds for them. And we're, the budget itself is essentially a blueprint for the year, and we vote individually on capital items as they occur and are presented to us. We frequently amend the budget to accommodate new projects as they become ready. I'm sure that this year will not be any different. So I feel confident that this is a good budget and will support it.
Any further comments? I would just like to comment, yes, let's say something.
I was going to say, I think it's, it sounds like based off of some of the late mail that, that maybe some members of the public and Tiburon residents believe that once we pass a budget and once that we pass a CIP, that it's set in stone. And, and I think it's probably worth clarifying that that's not the case. And so once the, the Parks Master Plan is done, and if there are projects on that that we want to fund, then we'll meet following the Parks Master Plan and add those projects. Those projects would potentially be added to the CIP and, and also to the, to the budget. And so passing a budget now doesn't preclude us from changing the budget or altering the buzzet, budget at any point during the fiscal year.
Thank you, and I would like to add to that, that considering individual projects individually added to the budget this way, in the absence of the context of the completed recreation strategic plan is really considering projects in a silo. We need to consider them in the context of what our infrastructure plans are and our recreation priorities are. So I too am ready to approve the item. To approve the municipal budget and the CIP. And if someone would.
I just had a comment.
Yes, I'm sorry, Holly. We don't.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I know. It's really hard. I'm here, but I'm not actually there in person. So I apologize. I did want to thank all the members of the public for sending in. I did review all of the correspondence. My colleagues have said it very well. That approving this budget tonight does not preclude us from approving projects later. And it doesn't, I know that it might not be an interior process, but some of the projects are still in our Parks Master Plan, and we need to have them more developed before they could come to the council. And they give us exact dollar amounts and plans. And it does not mean by approving this budget tonight, it does not mean that all the projects you wrote about are not going to be included or worked on or, you know, happened. So I just wanted to reach out to the public and say thank you. We read your letters, as you can see. And we really appreciate your comments, and we will definitely consider all of the items that you raised. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Are there any further comments?
One other comment. I think also, you know, for the, for the Parks Master Plan, you know, if there is a proposal in there, or there are projects in there, we can add them. But that's also the case for, I think there, there were a couple of emails that came in around the police force and potentially adding budget to the police, to the Tiburon Police Force. I think that request should come from, from TPD. And if it, if a request does come from TPD, that's something that we can evaluate. But going the other way around seems like a little bit of an overreach on our part. So I think it's, you know, like Councilmember Thier had said, we do read all of these letters and we take them very seriously. And, and if, if something does come, come in in terms of a proposal or something for parks, that's when we, we could, we could add it to the budget or add it to the CIP.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? I am seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the budget, the municipal budget and the capital improvement program?
So moved.
And a second? Is that you, Holly?
Yes, it was I, Mayor Fredericks.
Thank you. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nick Farr?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier?
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks?
Yes. We move now to action items. Our first action item is a very exciting one, and I'm sure there's a staff report.
There is a staff report, and I would like to take a moment of our time to introduce to you Grace Ledworth, who, if you remember, we did approve a shared position with Mill Valley and a sustainable corp, sustainability coordinator. It's been about close to a year now. It's been a very successful program, and I think Grace has done an excellent job. And I'm sorry that we haven't come beforehand to introduce her. But she is going to review the Beacon Program and walk you through the process.
Here, his tech role. Please give me a moment. Yeah, if you hit the PowerPoint setting, that'd be great.
Amazing. Alrighty. Well, it's a pleasure to meet all of you councilmembers and, yes, Dana said, sorry, hasn't been earlier, but we're happy to be here now. So an overview of this Beacon Program, which is through the Institute of Local Government and is on the calendar today. Should be on.
Should work now.
Okay, there you go. So the Beacon Program is a voluntary program, and it honors cities and towns, counties, special districts that are taking actions to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, saving energy and adopting policies that promote sustainability. So it's a big network of communities, especially in California, that are working toward, you know, cap projects and reducing greenhouse gas emissions and community emissions. So it's free to join, and it is designed to complement existing programs within the town. So it would translate really well into collaborating with other jurisdictions and learning from them, and then getting feedback on what has worked, what hasn't, in terms of projects and implementation. And would actually also increase our competitiveness for grants, so the fiscal impact could actually be negated. See if I can get this work again.
I can do it if you.
Yeah, you want to do it? Great. Thank you.
You know what it is? Hang on one second. There you go. Now it should work. There you go.
So participation, what does participation entail? So as a participant in this program, we would receive technical assistance in collecting, reporting, and tracking sustainability best practices, energy savings, and greenhouse gas reductions. A lot of this is already done through the county and a lot of the work that we do with the county already, but it would kind of be a supplement to that work we're doing already, and we could also see how we compare it to other jurisdictions again across California. Opportunities for award recognition, so it wouldn't be anything that we haven't been working on already. So all the work that we were doing for our cap and our sustainability programs, we could document that and then also receive awards and recognition for that work being done, which is really cool. Access to peer, peer networking, like I mentioned, so it's multi-jurisdictional. And I mentioned on the bottom of the slide, so some of the more local jurisdictions include Mill Valley, Santa Fel, Marin County, Santa Rosa, Sonoma County, Palo Alto, and Berlin Game. So even on a local level, it's really important. Other jurisdictions are considered joining this as well. And we also have, could get invitations to showcase sustainability leadership and agency achievements to a statewide audience, which is really important, too. Essentially taking away the silos of this program implementation and really making it transparent to everyone within the state and working together to make implementation as easy and simple as possible. And then this is a breakdown of what the awards look like. So there's different levels. So there's silver, gold, and platinum. We would have very little issue receiving some of these level of awards, 5% reductions in one of each of the 10 categories. So natural gas, electricity is a big one. A lot of that work is being done really well throughout the town in terms of replacing greenhouse gas emissions through energy reduction savings, solar, whatnot. And then community greenhouse gas reduction. So a lot of the work that's being done through our cap, we are documenting a very big change, and we obviously have our goal to meet by 2030. So by pursuing those programs, we could also get awards for them. And for next steps, what we would need to do to participate in the program? A simple online application that just gives a little bit of background about the town. We would need to have a designated lead staff member and a designated elected official to service the main point of contact for the Beacon Program. We need to adopt resolution, which is attached as Exhibit One, that commits us to being a participant in the program. We could, and this is not required, but we would submit annual applications to receive the awards. As I showed in the previous slides, so the gold, silver, or platinum level. And then we would have to participate in ongoing peer learning and technical assistance, which would be done by staff. So recommendation for the town council is to adopt the resolution, attach as Exhibit One, authorizing the town to participate in the program, and then have a designated staff member and a designated official. Any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. Help me understand the informal collaboration. Right now, even though sea level rise is, is listed in our general planners or discussed in the hazard section, it's often discussed as, as part of sustainability. Is this part of the subject matter of this collaborative group? And do they foresee themselves as part of the, the more specific collaboration with whatever the county develops as a governance structure and decision-making body?
Yeah, so for my own clarification, are you asking if sea level rise is an explicit part of this program? If it's something, a topic that's brought up in accordance with other work that's being done, especially within the county? Yeah, okay. I think it would be, you know, sea level rise, as you know, is really complicated, and it touches on every aspect of the work that the town does and the work that jurisdictions do. And it is often put in the sustainability category. And greenhouse gas reductions and sea level rise often go hand in hand. Explicitly, though, you know, a lot of this program isn't focused toward shoreline adaptation, or what we would call climate adaptation. It's more of climate action, so taking the steps to reduce greenhouse gases versus the adaptation part, which is more of sea level rise.
That, that was very helpful. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Yes, John?
So reading the staff report and listening to you, it sounds as if the Beacon Program is intended to be and, and likely is perfectly complementary with our existing greenhouse action plan, climate change action plan. I just want to confirm that that's the case and that there are no limitations or restrictions that we encounter when we add Beacon to our.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and the answer is actually definitely not. And the climate action plan fully supports this. So part of the measures of our climate action plan is to look for opportunities such as these, to join collaboratives, join programs that support and promote collaboration, especially between local jurisdictions. We're doing that already in a lot of different ways. So, for example, the Marin Climate Energy Partnership is another version of a group of collective of jurisdictions where we talk about items such as these. So this would just kind of be a bigger extension of that sort of work. So yeah, no worries about any limitations that this program would have on our climate action plan.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? I am seeing none. I would like to open this now to public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this agenda item? Anyone on Zoom, Lee?
Seeing none.
Then we bring it back to the council for any further discussion, or even better, a motion to adopt the resolution and appoint a council member.
I do have one quick comment before we do that, which is you know, last year, when we passed the climate action plan, it was passed with a lot of excitement and optimism, and I'm just curious if we have yet agendized a time for a report back? Or if we could try and do that so that we can get a report on what we've accomplished thus far and what challenges remain? That would be great.
That, that would be great. And if we could include in that, even, even though it is about adaptation rather than sustainability, anything about sea level rise, any ongoing projects or long-term planned projects, that'd be great. And I would also like to point out, not to put you on the spot, John, that, that you were the person who made the suggestion and, and saw that we had a sustainability element. So let's first, if there are no further comments from the council? No, seeing none.
I had a comment. I had a comment.
Say again?
I had a comment. So I, I wanted to start by thanking Grace. It's really great to almost meet you. And I also wanted to say that, you know, the Beacon Program is exactly what, part of what we're trying to do with this sustainability plan, climate action plan. So I'm happy to see this moving forward. I don't know if now's the time to say I would be interested in being the councilperson, unless we have someone else who really can't live without doing. Yes.
So in that, you made a motion to adopt the resolution, did you, Vice Mayor?
Sure, I can make a motion to adopt the resolution.
May I have a second, please?
Second. And I could just jump in real quick. We would also recommend that we appoint Grace as our staff member, so.
Sorry for not making that explicit, but yes, I would volunteer my, the staff member for the main point of contact for this program.
Now, I, and this is not in lieu of the councilmember's.
So we'd need both. So we need a staff contact and an elected official contact.
Okay, fine. I didn't see this in.
I think that's a separate motion, right?
Or it could be this.
What, you mean just cobble it all together? I was going to take it one by one.
Yeah, because we have a motion and a second. We could cover that in that, in a second.
So, so let's have a roll call vote on the adoption of the resolution first.
Councilmember Nick Farr?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier?
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks?
Yes. And now let's move to a, a motion to appoint Grace as the staff member to, to this program. I will make the motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Nick Farr?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier?
Yes.
Mayor Fredericks?
All right, that motion passes. Now we move to the appointment of a council member. Our vice mayor is interested. Is there any other interest in serving? Well, how about a motion to appoint Vice Mayor? Well, uh, how about a motion to appoint Vice Mayor Thier as the council member to serve as contact for the program?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nikfar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Willner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
What if I voted no? No, yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. Moving on now to action item number two, building permit extension. Is there a staff report?
There is. I'm waiting for the town manager to place it up. I actually have the building official here as well. So Doug and I will tag team this one. Um, we have a few slides just to go through the background and what we're trying to do today. And then we'll open it up to questions and um the contractors are here as well, and they may wish to do a presentation or speak to you.
Are the applicants here?
They are. The contractors are here, so they can have a chance to speak as well. I'll give a very brief presentation and then you can have the opportunity to speak to um the contractors and or Doug. So. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Um, what we have before you tonight, um, and we have done this before for a number of projects recently in the past year, is a recommendation to consider a building permit extension and any related fees and penalties for a single-family residential project. And the building permit number is sixteen dash three seventy-one. And the project is located at two-two-one-five Vestazo East Street. So just a little background, the building permit was issued in twenty nineteen, June of twenty nineteen, with an expiration date of eighteen months after that issuance. And as you know, the applicants may come and request extension. The applicant currently has received four extensions, including an eight eighteen-month COVID extension that was required by state legislation. The most recent um extension expired on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And the building official placed a stop work on the project as we are waiting this extension. The overall project's schedule has been impacted by a number of factors. However, a significant construction delay was caused by permit violations, including a six-month delay for failure to install a fire hydrant prior to construction of the residence. So where are we today? As I've said before, the building official has granted three extensions as he is authorized in the municipal code. And then the council extended that permit on December sixth, twenty twenty-three. Currently, the applicant has a a number of items to complete which are not were not complete by June thirteenth. And therefore, we stopped the project and we brought this item before the town council to request an additional extension to finish those remaining items. I will note that he is pretty close to completion at this point in time. The applicant has provided a schedule showing the completion by the end of July, and that is in your packet tonight. The town council may grant a six-month extension to finish the project. And the total amount of this fifth extension is seventy-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. So what we're asking tonight is, you're receiving my verbal staff report, take public testimony and to grant the permit extension either in accordance with the municipal code or with modified terms if the council concludes that modification is warranted. Or of course, you do have the option of denying the request for the permit extension. And I would let you know that if we do that, then we need to go back and start this project over again. And um, I think our goal tonight is to finish this project. And with that, um, uh, we are available for any questions.
Any questions from the council? I am seeing none. Is there any further comment from the staff?
No, I think what we are is available once you've heard the the presentation, if they wish, um, the applicant or the the contractor. Um, and we're here for questions.
So this would be the time, if desired, for the applicant to make comments. If you want to do that, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Well, I think what you need to do is then to come to the podium, at least to state that so that you know that you've been discussing this with us and you are understanding and and okay with it.
I understand everything what we are reading now together.
Into the mic, please. We would all want to hear you.
And we real need a little time to finish everything because we almost done. We have to pass all inspection cap. We almost there, almost finished, and we need this time to finish the project. And I think it's interesting for everyone here to finish it and make a great product in your city.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to make a comment on this? Anyone on Zoom?
Seeing none.
Bring it back to council for discussion.
I can't see who it would benefit to not grant the extension, so I will move that we approve the extension.
Second.
Do you do you need more information in the motion than that?
No, no, Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Maybe have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Nikfar.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Willner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. And that concludes this item. Thank you, staff. Thank you, applicants. We move now uh to public hearings. Mill Valley Refuge Service Rate Increase Application.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, tonight, this item is related to the um rate increase application from Mill Valley Refuge Service for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. As council knows, the town has an exclusive franchise agreement with Mill Valley Refuge for the collection of um solid waste, both residential and commercial. Um, the agreement allows Mill Valley Refuge to adjust fees um uh sort of in a variety of ways. Um, in in this instance, the uh in the requested increase is above the CPI, uh, so council um uh needs to consider the rate increase. The initial rate application was received in April uh from Mill Valley Refuge, and that was for an eight-point-one-five percent uh increase from the current rates. As has been the practice for many years, uh, the town of Tiburon, along with uh all the other uh Mill Valley Refuge franchisees, which include City of Belvedere, Town of Corder Medera, a a number of uh special districts in Marin, uh enlisted the help of R three consulting to analyze the rate application for accuracy and consistency with the franchise agreements. Um, based on the Mill Valley Refuge, uh I'm having a hard time here. Hang on one second. Based on the Mill Valley Refuge, um, the review of the Mill Valley Refuge application by R three, there were some minor adjustments made to um the rate application, which lowered the town of Tiburon's rate from eight-point-one-five percent to seven-point-nine-two percent. Um, the average for, I believe, for all the Mill Valley Refuge um franchisee agencies was around seven-point-six-eight percent. Um, we have a representative from R three consulting uh via Zoom, participating, Jim Hovison, as well as representatives from Mill Valley Refuge Service here in the audience, if council would like to ask any questions.
Um, are there any questions of staff? Yes.
Really a question directed to R three, but is that is now the time for that?
Yes, in this instance, uh, you know, they're representing staff. So um Lee um is.
Yes, Mr. Howison is is joining as a panelist presently.
Yeah, I'm on now. Thank you.
Yep. So Jim, um, Mr. Hovison is from R three consulting, and he was um very involved and probably led the charge in reviewing the rate application.
Great. And is is Jim the one who was previously here when we were reviewing, when we were discussing uh whether or not to renew?
No, that was Rose Radford, another representative from R three consulting.
All right. All right. So um I I guess I would say, uh, I think it's on.
If it is, that's fine.
Yeah. I guess I would say that uh the materials we saw when we were talking about renewing or not renewing the existing agreement with Mill Valley Refuge were pretty convincing that we are kind of right in the middle. And uh uh it was an appropriate, probably the best, the the most fiscally responsible thing to do is to renew or or to continue uh with our current contract rather than seek uh bids elsewhere. I guess, I'm not sure if you know the answer to this question, but the first question is, was the data that we looked at that compared us to uh other localities in the area, did it include this proposed increase? And all the other proposed increases, or was it pre-increase? Do you know?
Actually cannot answer that. I was not part of that project, so I apologize. I just don't know.
Okay, does does staff know?
I don't know the answer to that question. Um, but I would note that many of the, well, particularly the Mill Valley Refuge franchise are experiencing the relatively more or less the exact same increase, uh, give or take a quarter percent.
Okay. Well, one thing that caught my eye uh in the R three report, I guess, let me see if I have a it's page four. There's a chart that basically shows the the all the different jurisdictions in Marin uh and the what they pay for thirty-two gallon refuse pickup. And again, uh, uh, within Mill Valley Refuge, it appeared that we were kind of smack dab in the middle or close to it in terms of what's being uh the the cost. There are some jurisdictions with significantly lower fees. However, when you look at some other jurisdictions, I I discount most of them because they're very different locations. Uh, you know, uh, something like Stinson or wherever is a very different place than Tiburon. However, uh, I did notice two in particular that caught my attention. One was Sausalito, uh, which is all the way down at forty dollars. Uh, and another was Nevada. Where is that? Nevada, uh, which is below forty dollars. That looked like a less than thirty dollars, in fact. So I'm wondering if you could uh explain to us what accounts for their really low rates uh and is that something we could get? Or is there some particular reason why those two urban areas? Particularly Sausalito seems to be similar in geography to Tiburon. Why their rates are so much lower?
So one of the important things that should be noted with a rate survey is it is a comparison of like-kind parts. But what it isn't, it isn't a comparison uh apples-to-apples comparison concerning services. So some cities towns have more services than others, which then generate higher rates in comparison. At the same time, fees can come into play that generate higher rates. But to say that the chart that you're looking at is an apples-to-apples comparison, it's just a general guide. And to actually answer that question would require an in-depth uh analysis against those cities to determine what service levels they are having. And that just wasn't part of uh this process. So wide variety of reasons why rates differ. That's um, yeah. So thank you for the question.
Okay, well, w- we'll talk about this, I guess, more in the comments period, but that's basically, that answer basically sounds like we put this chart in here, but it doesn't really mean what you think it means. It's just a chart. Don't take it seriously because there's stuff that you you can't understand that's not in the chart.
It it's just standard practice that we put in localities close to each other, so you can have a comparison.
Of course.
Unfortunately, you know, the rate analysis that we did in conjunction with the franchise and in conjunction with the application, it just doesn't afford that type of an analysis. So I I apologize if you feel it's it's not up, not up to par. So I apologize.
Well, it's it's not a matter of apology. It's just that the, in order to make a decision, the council needs good data. And uh, we presume that R three is providing us with a report that explains why we should approve or not approve the increase. This chart is in the report to show us, to compare us to other jurisdictions. Barring any explanation why we, I mean, I I don't know why we look at it. If if we see a jurisdiction that's less than half our cost and there's no explanation as to why, it it's just begs the question, why?
So.
An opportunity to ask the service provider.
I mean, it's um I guess, who is BCRS?
Bay City Refuge.
Bay City Refuge. And then it doesn't, it looks like you ran out of space maybe with Nevada. It's in the middle of all the RSMs. Is that also served by RSM?
I believe it is, yes.
Again, that, and which one is that? That's.
If I'm, if I may, I would like to address a little bit about what the report is actually stating.
Yeah.
And I know, I understand your concern over the different rates on the different agencies. But what we do when we review a rate application is we review the actual costs associated with that particular hauler. In this case, Mill Valley. So what we're actually doing is we're going through their financials, we're analyzing their data, we're proving the accuracy of it, we're comparing it against the franchise agreement. And we're also reviewing their projections to make sure that those costs are reasonable and are within industry standards. So while I understand your concern over the chart, if you look at the overall application as a whole, what we're really doing is reviewing Mill Valley, not the other agencies.
I understand.
Any further questions? Anyone else? I speak. You look like you're rubbing up there.
I I'm a little surprised by uh the information we have been given tonight. I I think it's important. I mean, I think Jim stated it, but I I think it's important to understand what the purpose of the analysis is. And and Jim stated it, and perhaps it doesn't make sense to have this chart in this report. It's analyzing their application for a rate increase, not compared to others. It it's, you know, looking at their past, uh, you know, their financials and that. And uh, yeah, I think we understand what what the chart means. I think it's not very useful. No, my point is that it's the chart, you you that may be true, but the re the report is useful because it's very detailed on what they're actually doing.
My my real question is is a little different, and it may be a subsequent agenda item, but uh, my real question is why this chart looks so different from the one that we saw last time we looked, comparing us to all the other jurisdictions in Marin? I don't think we saw rates that were thirty dollars when we, you know, for Nevada, when we were looking about, uh, when we were asking the question about whether or not we should continue with Mill Valley Refuge, it seems my recollection was that all the charts showed us basically looking like the Mill Valley chart, the Mill Valley portion of this chart, which was squarely in the middle of where other jurisdictions were. And my recollection was that there were a few other locations being served by other providers, and they looked basically the same or maybe slightly lower. So I just um uh, this just makes me feel uncomfortable. I I don't doubt that the, you know, R three does what it always does, which is it looks at the numbers that Bill Valley proposes and it kind of fine tunes them to make sure that they're accurate. That's fine. Uh, but this chart surprised me in that it looked very different from what we were previously presented with when we were talking about renewing. And I could be wrong. I see Greg looking for it and I find it. But uh, I don't, I don't think we saw this this kind of chart.
I had a follow-up question from Mr. Iverson.
Were you going to respond to John? No.
No.
Holly, please, Vice Mayor, please go.
Yes, I can't see Greg's face, so I didn't know if I was responding or not. Yes, uh, Mr. Iverson, I was just curious, in your experience, um, could you explain why we might have such a different rate than uh Sausalito? And some of the other rates that Councilmember Willner pointed out? Why would there be that big? Why would there be that big of a difference in the rates?
Sure, there's, there's many things that actually drive rates. When is the level of service, whether you have street sweeping? Fees that are built into it. The hard to service areas actually costs more because the trucks have to go slower. Sometimes they have to go farther. It's more manual for them to work. And so like I mentioned earlier, the there, there's numerous factors that do impact rates. And that, that's, that's really the answer. There's just very, there's a great number of variables.
And as a follow-up question.
That one, by, street sweeping would be included in the thirty-two gallon residential rate comparison?
So, yes, if, if a community has street sweeping, those costs are distributed among the different part sizes. It's not a question of whether it's a thirty-two or a sixty-four. Everybody takes their fair share of the cost. That's the premise behind it.
Any further comments? Questions?
Just, just a quick follow-up question. If you would R three be able to do a study and tell us why our rates are so different?
So this is a question to the service provider?
I think this is a question to staff.
Yes, it's a question to staff.
Asking if we could do a study, is it possible to do a study to explain to us why the rates are so different? Instead of just saying.
I suspect it's possible, you know, it again, and it would be, you know, it requires us to hire someone to look at our franchise agreement and compare it point by point to every other franchise agreement that's out there. And I don't know if Sausalito's franchise agreement includes street sweeping. I mean, that's a major factor. Ours does, of course, you know, Mill Valley Refuge street sweeps the whole town of Tiburon almost every day. Or I mean, they're, they're in Tiburon every day, street sweeping and do the whole town, you know, once a week. I can't tell you all the other, you know, differences, but that certainly is a significant one. So it'd be possible, but.
If I may, to conduct a study of that level would require the cooperation of all the other agencies and also all the other hauling companies involved. And we would have to have the cooperation of them to, I mean, not just us, anybody who did that level of analysis. It would have to be a coordinated and a cooperative endeavor to do it. Because we don't.
It sounds Herculean.
Pardon me?
The way you said it sounds Herculean to pull something like that together.
Well, well, it is, because what happens with other agencies and other garbage companies, they do their financial information as as, as privileged and confidential. So unless we are actively.
Isn't this all public information?
What do you mean? You can't have secrets about how.
Now, what are we talking about here?
No.
We're, we're talking about all this publicly. Every other town talks about this publicly.
No, but see, what happens is with any rate application, with any financial study, we have to gain access to their financial information. What you're seeing here is a summary of that information related just to Mill Valley. But the level of analysis that you're talking about requires a deep dive, and that's when we have to get the cooperation of all parties, which honestly could be problematic because they don't like to disclose their detailed internal financial information.
Unless you're talking about, not the cities, you're talking about the underlying utilities?
I'm talking about the, the other hauling companies.
So you're saying, if we just wanted to compare ourselves to Nevada and to Sausalito and figure out why their rates are so much lower than ours? It sounds like what you're saying is that you think we can't do it, which I, I just can't accept.
It's not that we can't do it. It's just, it requires a level of cooperation that honestly, I've been in the hauling business for ten years. I've never attempted that. Because it has never.
No one's ever compared why rates by one hauler are less than another between two cities.
All I can do is go back to my original answer is that we would have to get the detailed financial information to get it, get the proper understanding that you're looking for.
I'm wondering, is it possible to ask Mill Valley Refuge some of these questions?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes. Yeah, and I, I think we can do that if there's no further questions from the Council of Staff. I am seeing none. So now is the time for public comment on this. And that would include Mill Valley Refuge if they would like to comment.
I, I, I don't know if I would necessarily expect them to understand other, other garbage companies, but, you know, maybe we can ask the difference between, you know, Tiburon and, I don't know, one of the other ones that's, that looks like it's less expensive on this chart. I guess first question is, is this chart accurate? I think would be a good question.
Yes, so I would stand by R three's work in terms of, you know, they work with variety of different independent haulers, and I think it's important to have third-party assurance. Now, what to, to speak, to elaborate more on what Jim is discussing in terms of different contracts, different contracts have different set of fee structures. In addition, contracts also have street sweeping that can be a built-in cost to a thirty-two, thirty-two gallon rate. Also, haulers have, they might have different access to facilities, including disposal fees. They might have different union contracts. They might have different franchise fee arrangements. They might also have different set of city services. They might have different allowable costs and disallowable costs. There is a level of complexity in terms of how the contract is structured and how Millvi Refuge Service handles their rate application in comparison to other contracts. In addition, some contracts could also have different CPI measures. We use CPI on all items for San Francisco, Oakland, and Hayward, but there's other haulers as well that they might use CPI for sewer water and trash to get a more accurate number. In addition, it it, it's depending on where the hauler is located, they might have access to different types of vehicles that can handle, you know, different types, different types of equipment. Different types of, they, they might invest more in SB thirteen eighty-three compliance. That's a cost that we incur internally within our team. It's just, it depends. I, you know, my stance, if you guys have questions with this, I'm our company's position, we're more than happy to assist with that, and we can kind of show different rate studies, and it is information that I think that we can compile and get together to help in terms of, for instance, how Tiburon's contract can compare to another jurisdiction. A lot of this stuff should be public record. So, you know, my position, I'm here to help you with aid in, aid your decision-making when it involves to this. So, yeah, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, I just had a comment, and this doesn't fully address Councilmember Wellner's questions, but the last time this came up, one of the things that impressed me is something we don't think about is just the costs because of the road layout of picking up the refuse. So here in Tiburon, we, we have so many dead ends so that the trucks have to go up and down the streets to get to the next street. And also simply the distance that you have to haul the refuse to recycling centers. Those are some of the things that account for differences besides the variables that you mentioned in our previous questioning. And I see from your nodding that it's still part of the cost differences.
What you mentioned, the one that comes to mind is something like a road impact fee. Road impact fees, you know, those also can get built back into the rate. Now, County Marin removed the road impact fee. The Board of Supervisors voted on it. That's why they're not getting a rate increase for this year. A lot of these costs have an impact in terms of how the rate is calculated. Where we have to be held accountable and be transparent is we have to be able to show that these costs are necessary to provide the level of service. So it's, and that's where R three's report is very helpful because they do the third-party assurance. In terms of, we do have one jurisdiction that still does have a road impact fee. But from my understanding with the franchise fees that we do provide in terms of the contract, a lot of those funds I can imagine are used for a variety of uses as the city's seat fee, and that can include road impact. I do know that with, with heavy, you know, heavy-duty trucks, they are going to have an impact with, with the roads.
And, and I was thinking more of the time and cost to travel up a road and then down it without collecting. I, my mind is much simpler than road impact fees. Thank you.
No, of course.
Yes, John.
So, yeah, I, I think the, the road issue is one where that's why Sausalito on this chart stands out to me because they have just as a, as a layperson looking at the communities, kind of a similar hilly winding road kind of situation. I would just, given what you've volunteered, I would just ask, request to the extent you can, if you could provide us with some kind of analysis to the extent that the information is publicly available, comparing why the rates are so different between us and Sausalito and Nevada. That would be really helpful to me going forward.
Absolutely. And I, I have a good relationship with Bay Cities Refuge. They're also family-owned. They've been alone for a long time. The, the thing with Bay Cities Refuge is to keep in mind is, you know, they only operate in Sausalito, and they also do, I believe they do San Quentin.
A couple of county sites.
Yeah, a couple of county sites. So when, when you do have, when, when you can be a much smaller type of organization, I'm not going to speak for them, but from experience, it could require them to have a lesser team as well to service the community. And also, it, it depends on how their rate calculation structure is calculated.
Whatever, whatever reasons are, I, I have no.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, I am, I am going to be seeing them at, we're, we're going to a County Marin. It's kind of like a haulers meeting hosted by Zero Waste Marin, so I will talk with them, and then I can get back to you.
Appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you. Is, is there any further comment?
I, I would like to talk about the, the rate increase. What, what I will talk into the factors to consider with this rate application, we are requesting seven point nine two percent. I understand that it is also above CPI. Our average rate increase the last three years has been four point three two percent. CPI is four point one seven percent. So we are trending slightly above CPI. Now, the biggest costs that are being incurred currently is involved with labor, disposal costs, insurance, and capital expenditures. So with, with respect to labor, you know, last year we had a fifteen percent increase with our, with our workers. This year it's five and a half percent. In addition, we're making more investments with our people. We're hiring an additional mechanic for Alex's department. And we also hired a safety lead person as well to address increase in injuries and also just promote more safe driving habits. And part of our union contracts is we had to build parity between our garbage drivers and our recycling drivers. So there are escalating costs associated with that. So when I say it's a five and a half percent increase, it includes for all of our drivers and employees. In terms of, also just more context, we had to respond to market conditions to give them the raise for them to do the job. There's, depending on location, San Francisco, for instance, drivers are making significantly higher, and we had to stay competitive in order to mitigate turnover. In terms of disposal costs, waste management, they adjust their fees through CPI, so we're always going to expect an increase there with respect to garbage and organic compost. However, we did, we are experiencing currently a two hundred twenty-eight percent increase with recycling processing costs. Now, a lot of that is contingent on commodity prices with recyclables. They're very volatile. We were aware of it. And part of our agreement with the Marin Resource Recovery Center, our position is we want to be able to support sustainable recycling programs. So we understand it's going to be volatile for right now, but I do expect this to get better in the future as markets get stabilized for paper and plastic. With insurance, we are seeing an increase in premiums. And a lot of that hinges on our increase in injuries, which is hence why we hired a safety lead person to make an impact there. We did see a decrease in accidents, which is important. So part of our approach with that is we've installed Lytics cameras in all of our fleet of trucks, and a lot of that is it helps us, it helps exonerate drivers from accidents, but it also enforces more accountability in terms of service verification. And it's, it gives the driver more assurance that they have protection and also gives the company more assurance that they have protection in case something happens. Now, with capital expenditures, we purchasing three trucks, we had a few that just arrived. So part of purchasing trucks were required to replace our fleet in, in terms of California Air Resources Board. Those three trucks are diesel. And in addition, we had to purchase additional carts and containers to perform the service. So we're expecting increase in depreciation, I believe, a hundred sixty-eight K. Or a hundred sixty-seven K, excuse me. I know I talked previously about legislative updates with zero emission vehicles, but if there, if there's any more questions or comments, I'd be more than happy to assist.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Thank you very much. I, the information is very helpful.
Thank you. And I, I wanted to make one last comment from the previous meeting. I really appreciate a lot of the comments that were geared a lot towards our drivers and employees. It really, it means a lot to us in terms of our community. And one last closing statement is part of, part of, part of our company and leading the company is that we take environmental stewardship very seriously. And so I, I really appreciate the engagement when it comes to a lot of this upcoming legislation in terms of zero emission vehicles and asking questions about recycling and also inquiring about composting and SB thirteen eighty-three updates. So that's all I had to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further comments from the public? I am seeing none. I will bring the item back to the council.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, excuse me, I do have one member of the public online that would like to make a comment.
We have a member of the public on Zoom, is that it?
Yes, yes. With your permission, I will recognize Jason Rosell. Jason, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear. I'm not, I don't leave on video, though. Which I assume is okay.
That's okay. Please proceed.
And just for one point of clarification, is this going to vote today?
Are we going for a vote on that? Is that what you're asking? That's what's on the agenda.
Okay. In, in that case, first I'd like to thank the council for hearing me. I'd like to thank Councilmember John Wellner for his comments today. I think he was directly on point. He reviewed the report, obviously. I also reviewed the report, and he hit on many of the same items that I, that I acknowledge as well, including the fact that the, the projections, it's on, nobody can answer today whether projections include the, the rate increase or not, which I think that right there kills this resolution. And if, if that's not enough, then the second question is, or the second issue is the comparison to the other cities. We've heard comments today regarding differences in service levels, which may increase the cost of Tiburon. If there's improved service levels in Tiburon, I don't know what they are for residents. We get our trash picked up once a week. We now have to do more sorting than we had to do five years ago. And we get, we only get our recycling paper picked up every other week, in glass, every other week. So I don't know where the improved service levels are. Every year that we've improved, that we've approved increased fees, we've, we've heard that there's going to be investments in vehicles and automation. I have not seen any new vehicles. I can't tell you also that I've ever seen a, a street sweeper on my, on my street. So, again, service levels, investments should all be second-guessed. And I think at the end of the day, from what I've heard, there is a serious question as to whether or not this should be put out to bid again. If we cannot get the information from R three or from Mill Valley Refuge, then we'll put it out to, then we should put it out to bid and let the companies come to us and tell us what their service levels are going to be and what their price is going to be. Um, so with that, I'd ask that the council, um, to the extent that there is a vote taken today, uh, reject the resolution. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Lee?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Bring it back to council. Uh, let, let me just start by saying, I think we covered the issue of putting it out to bid again. I think RV said we are not likely to find a competitive bit bid. Um, some of the regulatory costs that were referred to are on an ongoing basis that requires you for, to build reserves, um, to buy some of these vehicles that will be required. So not having accountability in this particular year, um, i- is not a realistic way to, to reach those goals. I, uh, support adoption of the resolution and I would like to hear from my council members.
Thanks. So, um, thanks for coming. Um, and I, I just want to say, I feel like these are two separate issues. And I think that the issue that you raised is very valuable and it's really important. And I, I still don't, I don't believe, no offense to you, uh, Mr. Allison, but I, I think it is possible to generate an apples to apples comparison with service and rates without understanding the underlying financials of a hauler. You can do it from the public entity perspective and get a reasonable answer that, that works for everybody. And we should probably do that because I think that would be valuable. Um, but, but tonight, the other issue is the rate increase. Um, and, you know, we have a contract and they are, Mill Valley Refuge is legally entitled to costs increases to, to pass them along to us. And R three has evaluated those and I feel, um, perfectly comfortable that their numbers are accurate. But the place that always gives me heartburn with the structure of our contract, and I've talked to, um, Mrs. Delsopp about it several times is that, you know, we don't have a lever for in, for extracting efficiencies and having those savings passed, passed on to us. That's really effective for us. And even in the R three report, you know, on page three, they talked about a recommendation they made for last year for an improvement in efficiencies that ended up not being able to be implemented. Um, and so, you know, and I'm not saying you should have implemented something you couldn't do, but the lever there is, we just don't have a lever there to force you to do that. And I wish we did. Um, but in terms of the math behind the numbers that says this is the increase, um, I, I don't see any way to not support it, given that we have R three's analysis behind it. So I, I would support it.
Yeah. Uh, so I completely agree that we have two separate issues in front of us. Um, I think, given the contract that we have and given, uh, the, the process, uh, of review that R three has gone through, I think, uh, we need for this year, to support the resolution, I would say to the residents of Tiburon, that an eight percent increase or almost eight percent increase, for all intents and purposes, an eight percent increase is huge. It's not unnoticed by the council. Uh, it's something that we need to work on, uh, and figure out if we're getting a fair deal. And my view is the kind of analysis that we get from R three is what they promised to do, uh, which is review the numbers pursuant to the contract that we have. But it's not the kind of analysis that we need. Uh, and what I would like to ask staff to do is to figure out and report back to us what kind of, audit or report, uh, we could get from a consultant, not R three, that would compare our rates to Sausalito and to Nevada and explain to us why Nevada is less than half of ours and why Sausalito is, you know, just over half of ours. Um, it could be a very easy analysis. Maybe there's some very obvious reason that we're, that we're not seeing as we sit here today as to why the rates are so different. But I think we owe it to our residents to figure out why our rates are more than double, uh, a comparable uh, jurisdictions rates. So I'm, I'm, I don't have a solution. I'm asking staff to come back to us with a proposal for how to understand this issue. Cause taking it on faith year after year is very frustrating.
And, and I agree, there are two issues here. Um, and with respect to the issue of adopting the resolution before us, our, our, our V S, R V S, our consultant has said that we are not likely uh, to find the competitive bill. So with res, bid, so with respect to the first issue, that's kind of a done, done deal. I do agree that it would be helpful to have a better analysis of services and bids uh, for other jurisdictions.
Um, oh, who goes next? Um, yeah, I, it, it does seem like we have, we have two issues here. Um, you know, in, in, in reading through this report, it, it looks a little bit like the blind leading the blind, which is really unfortunate, uh, for as a, as, as a group of decision makers. Um, so that's pretty, that's pretty disappointing. Um, I, uh, don't mean to second guess council member Wellner, but I don't know if we need a consultant even to do that. I think maybe it's something at, at the town staff's discretion. You know, I don't, I don't want to tell, you know, Greg necessarily how to direct resources, but if it's a few phone calls, if it's, you know, maybe combing through some minutes and it's not a lot of work. I hope that we don't have to spend three hundred thousand dollars to, to get a, uh, get a side by side comparison of street sweeping, recycling, garbage, you know, the, the list of services that we do get, something that's kind of apples to apples. But, uh, uh, you know, based off of the report, it seems like we have a pretty clear path on what we, what we should, should do here. Um, and I tend to agree with the rest of my, of my, uh, council members on, um, on moving forward, but.
Well, it is, it seems to me and, and no one commented on it, that we have a, a path to some of the information through the relationships that Mill Valley Refuge has. Uh, and I am sure if they can gather that information, the services they gather it from would be willing to make it public. So that's one way to, and maybe staff can evaluate that as a source of information.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment. Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Fredericks. Um, you know, every year this is very difficult because, you know, the public doesn't distinguish between a rate increase and why are we paying so much more than another jurisdiction? So when, when they see these numbers, um, we are voting on two separate things. The, the eight percent rate increase is what we're voting on tonight. The report that was done by the consultant, unfortunately, only deals with that eight percent and does not compare to any other, um, jurisdiction. I really do like, uh, Councilmember Wellner's idea or mixed with Councilmember Nick Farr's idea. I don't know, whatever will get the job done. Because our residents are rate payers. We should know why we're paying the rates we're paying. And we should be voting, uh, on, on whether to, you know, continue our service with the current provider or not, really based on those rates. That's my, my opinion. You know, we are the guardians of garbage rates for our, um, residents. And because of that, we have to know why our rates are different. I do believe there's a lot of publicly available information. You know, I don't think we need to go into, uh, any hauler's private books. And all of these, uh, garbage contracts are a matter of public bid. If we were just to compare those items, you know, perhaps as Councilmember Nick Farr said, maybe it can be done by, by, uh, staff in combination with, you know, our current provider. Um, but I do think it's two separate issues and I'm glad that we've had this discussion because I really do believe that this year we will get down to the, to the bottom and figure out exactly why our rates are different.
All right. Did you see further comment from the council? If not, I would like to entertain a motion, um, to adopt the resolution.
I would make that motion.
And a second? I will second it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Nick Farr.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. Uh, the resolution passes. And I, I guess the rest, the second issue is really just instructions to staff. Thank you, John. Yes. So, uh, with that, we move to town council reports. Town manager report.
Uh, um, yeah, yeah. Uh, just two things. One is, um, I think, uh, next, we, we've had a lot of, I think, public, um, engagements at town council meetings about the Parks Master Plan. Um, our subcommittee is meeting next Friday to review some of the work from WRT. Um, very excited about moving that project forward and getting some actionable, um, uh, uh, insights out of that and being able to have that framework finally completed. And the other thing, I think we, we forgot to mention this, but today is Juneteenth. So, um, I don't, happy Juneteenth.
Juneteenth, everyone.
Yes, and I, I just wanted to say we had an amazing Juneteenth celebration on Saturday. I know, um, Mayor Fredericks was there. I believe Councilmember Ryan was there. And I think everybody hopefully had a chance to stop by. Um, and the community was out, our town manager was there. It was really an amazing celebration, uh, to Juneteenth. So I wanted to talk about that as well.
Yes, it was amazing. Uh, not just a wonderful band and our, our former vice mayor singing, but what the kids really love, um, are, 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 are the horses and the Buffalo soldiers who come all the way from Oakland every year. Um, and I think we should especially thank them. All right, a town manager report.
Uh, two items, Madam Mayor. First, um, I reminded the council that we're not meeting in July. So we will see you again in August. Of course, we have a closed session still this evening, but, um, also, um, just to let council know, I will be out of town starting tomorrow and be back next Thursday. Uh, be available generally by email and phone if needed. Also, I want to, um, to say a special thanks to our town clerk who's, uh, performing her duties from an undisclosed location in the Midwest and, uh, it worked out really well. I want to thank you, Lee. So.
Thanks, Greg.
And we echo that. Thanks, Lee. Thank you very much. Are there any further comments from the council? And seeing none, uh, we will adjourn to closed session.
And Mayor, if I may, make sure there's no.
Is there any public comment for closed session? Is there any public comment for closed session?
Are these chairs relatively new?
Yeah. Are they good?
Yeah.
Yeah, we bought them like two months ago.
Oh, John, you missed the meeting.
Oh, the new chair.
Yeah, we had a new chair discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
We donated all the old chairs to San Juan.
To where?
San Juan.
And they tell them they picked it up in no time. All right, I am.
That's pretty cool. That's good.
I am calling the town council meeting to order again after closed session. I believe there's no report. Staff says there's no report on the session. We are adjourned.